Eric, next to this, here's Snyder. Eric, vote.
Here. Motion to approve the agenda, please.
Okay.
We made a motion to approve the agenda. That's been seconded by Nate. Are there any other questions or comments? No other questions or comments? And all of the favor of Bob's motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. And a motion on the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the number nine two twenty fourteen and the expenditure with two exceptions, actually two exceptions. Number one, on the minutes, I believe it's the number seven zero, not eight. And also it says here Kirkwood indicated that previously when Schneider had requested this information, that would be the pasted up information and she received it and that I have documentation on that, a copy of that, I have the honor. Expenditure left, I want to pull Riverside Fire Department Annual Fundraising Dinner. Off, this is for discussion.
Second.
Okay. On the duly noted changes, Chris has made the motion with the exceptions as noted and seconded by Nate. Are there any other questions or discussion? So on changes that Chris has noted and pleased that you guys made those changes, all of the air, Chris's motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Okay, continue. Did you have, did you have something else there? No?
I had two corrections and I pulled that off the list, that's all I had.
Okay.
Then they passed it.
Well. You had excluded, you had two excluded, excluding two.
It's already, it's already passed.
Excluding Riverside Fire Department and the fundraising dinner.
I'll make a motion to approve the Riverside Fire Department Annual Fundraising Dinner. Second.
Okay. Bob's made a motion to approve the annual fundraising fire department dinner and it's been seconded by Tom. Are there any other questions or comments?
Yeah, yeah. It's not legal for us to use the least part to pay for a 3D model. Why would this be legal? This is a fundraiser. This is not dues. This is not a professional thing. This is just a fundraiser. In addition, which there is a drawing for prizes attached to it. I've bought my ticket already, but I paid for that on my own.
Okay, so Bob, would you carry the amendment, the motion of the considerations of the internal?
No, I'm not gonna amend it.
Okay. Any other discussion?
So who's, what's the money for? Just the donation or is it the purchasing of dinner tickets?
Our dinner tickets. That's the economic development director. According to my job description, I'm supposed to be involved in all community activities with other agencies and other bodies. I think it's an appropriate extent.
This is the third year that we went.
Any other discussion? There's no other discussion then on Bob's motion to approve the fundraising dinner fee. All of the favor of Bob's motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Yeah.
Motion carries, four to one. Moving on to committee reports. Anyone at this time on committee reports? Anyone? Committee reports? Okay, no committee reports, figures, then says and comments. Anyone at this time? If it's not on the agenda, you can make a comment if it's not on the agenda. If it's on the agenda, you need to wait until that item comes up for the, to make a comment. Anyone who says comment? If you would, come on up.
Paul Walton, W A O T, Owen. I missed the last meeting, so I'm not sure if this item was discussed, it has been in the past, but I was just curious if the city has a look into the possibility of buying the, is it a property at the corner of the park so that the park could be expanded and made square and then perhaps the building used as a shelter and then we have the garage that's there to be used for storage of boards or whatever else, whether or not that would be something that the council might put into the future.
What's your thought on that?
I think it'd be a good idea.
Okay. Anyone else on citizen time? Anyone? If there's no one else on citizen's time, I'm gonna move to item number seven, the resolution on the road use report. And we understand a motion on that. There's someone?
I'll make a motion to pass Resolution zero nine one five two oh one four dash one approving the road use tax fiscal year two thousand and fourteen report. Second.
Also made a motion to approve the road use tax report and seconded by Nate. Are there any other questions or discussion?
Yeah, I've got a question. It looks, if I'm reading this correctly, that our ending balance is two hundred and twenty-two thousand and fifty-two dollars, that's what we're going out with at the end?
Yeah.
On the next page, there is a line for insurance. Is that on the vehicles or is that on the property? What's that insurance on?
There'll be insurance that we pay on road use, but we don't pay any insurance on road use, so that's right to go.
I'm not sure I understand what you're telling me.
I'm telling you that we do not pay any of our insurance premiums out of road use fund.
Then why is it listed on the bill?
On where?
Well.
What page?
It would be on the third page of the report and it says two two zero insurance thirteen one six four.
Yes, I would assume that that, I would have to look it up, but what makes that, I would say that is probably on the vehicles.
Okay, so can you tomorrow or when you can research that, just send an email out to all the council as to what that is, was. Anything else?
Is there anything on here that you want us to be more clear on?
I went to the class, our next thirty day class, and went up and they pretty much went through each one and we had to look at it. Not really. I mean, the stuff that we are coming out here now, since we are not doing this anymore, we're using it actually as it should be used on road maintenance, snow removal, streets.
Any other questions?
The back page shows, the very, very back page shows what our estimated payments would be for the year.
Does that answer your question there, Bob? Okay, does anybody have anything else? If no one has any other questions then on Ralph's motion for the approval of the road use tax report, all of, I'll back up there. Nate? I'm gonna ask for a vote now. Nate?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Ralph?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And Bob?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously. Moving on to number eight, the WCRF grant for ball association, I think that's just a letter of support.
I make a motion to approve Resolution zero nine one five two zero one four dash two approving the Washington County Foundation Grant for Riverside Fire Department.
Ralph's made a motion, I mean, Chris has made the motion to approve the WCRF grant for the ball association and it's been seconded by Ralph. Are there any other questions or comments?
The information that we have at the desk, is that gonna be discussed later on as part of the drawing, Mr.? That's it for your information.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, if there are no other questions then I would give a call for a roll call vote and I would start with Chris.
Aye.
Ralph.
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
And Nate? Motion carried unanimously. Moving on to the WCRF grant. For the community center.
I'll make a motion to look through the Resolution zero nine one five two oh one four dash three. I'll second.
Bob has made a motion to approve the community grant, the WCRF grant for the community center and seconded by Ralph. Are there any other additional questions or comments? I have one, I'm waiting to see if the council has anything.
Yeah, I've got one. Other than the funding sources on the match, city approval strike is confirmed for seven hundred and fifty thousand, but that has not been voted on. I mean, this goes over a five-year period. The Shatman donation would be confirmed, Iowa road use, that's projected. Capital fundraising, do we even have anyone in charge of the fundraising program yet? Is that even off the ground?
That's part of the grant.
The foundation?
That the man of the Washington County took. That looks like you're taking up all the extra money that we will be getting in the future in order to go towards this and I guess we need to do that and we don't know what kind of other expenses we're gonna face in the future. I would have to see, I'd have to see a much better plan. We don't have a blueprint. We don't have fundraising off the ground.
Ma'am, that is all covered. That is part of the grant request to ask for the money for the architectural and engineering design to hire the fundraising company consultant to help us do the fundraising.
I understand that, but I think I'd like to see it broken out for each year a little bit better and spelled out a little bit better. We're asking people in this town taxpayers to put up a lot of money for something that they don't have any kind of clear picture on yet. And that would be my question.
I didn't base it out over the five years.
And I believe we did have a discussion about putting a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year for the next five years and savings account.
That was during our pleasure discussion and the council.
And this year was the first a hundred and fifty thousand, so if you times five, it's seven hundred and fifty thousand.
That's gonna have to be looked at and discussed every year. It's not like you can say right now, oh, that's what we're gonna do.
This isn't a concrete, this is a place to start.
Yeah, right, this is projected.
You know, this is just a place to start so that we can get a grant application and get it on the books for the next five years. This isn't dead set dollar amount, this is just like a budget, rough budget.
This is like a five-year plan we've been talking about trying to put together for the last three years, two years, and that it gives us something to shoot for, gives us citizens an understanding that this council is committed to see this community building through to, to hopefully we have a building up there. And so, I mean, this is the first step. I mean, if we don't, if we aren't awarded the funds here, that's just gonna put us back that much further. If we wait for five years until we know that we've put all this money away, now we're another five years down this fanny down the road before this building's gonna even materialize. And I think the council earlier in here when we talked about budget, they were very strong about putting any extra dollars we have aside that we could put towards the community building.
Item number twenty-six is kind of the steps that you take. The foundation doesn't allow you really day to day, you only want to put seven work elements, so it's purchasing some of the existing properties, surveying by hiring capital and starting up the financial. I mean, that would be in the first year that you begin, that's, I, I mean.
You're not approving, you're not approving a budget, all you're doing is approving our application for a grant.
But if we give the grant, then we're, we gotta fork up the money.
Over a five-year period, but that's in your comprehensive plan anyway.
Well, I think we're just jumping the gun here a little bit, so we've got like penis in the bank to do this project. Once ago, we talked about having a drawing of this property up here for this building. I haven't seen any of that, any of that yet.
I have that. What difference would that make in this region?
Because we don't have enough information here. We're like, like I'm gonna go buy the Ice House building because I think somebody's gonna put a bar on it someday. No, you just don't do it that way. It doesn't work that way. You don't go spend, I mean, I know we're applying for a grant here, but once we get that, if we get this grant, we're committed to a whole lot of money here.
You were?
No, you're not.
No, you're not. You turned in seventy thousand dollars worth of cash that you didn't do. You turned it back. You're not obligated to do anything.
What would be the point?
We're asking to find out their interest. And even to get your fund is impossible.
And I understand that, but this looks like a five-year wish list, doesn't look like a long-term plan. But you were gonna sell this to the foundation.
I've already sold it to them, ma'am. I've met with them six times and this is what they told me to do. And they said they were very open to it.
Now, while you're talking.
If you wait until you have the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you won't be on the council and I'll be freaking retired.
Well, we don't have to wait necessarily that long. These grants are available every year.
Yeah, but twice a year.
I'm not saying we.
I understand that, but the politics of it is Washington Iowa is asking for nothing because they had to go back to Michigan Iowa. Wellman, Mid Curry Schools are asking for very little. Cologne is asking for nothing. The door is wide open. That doesn't happen every year.
I thought Wellman was asking for.
They're asking for indoor practice facility that they already know they're not gonna get.
See, I see nothing wrong with putting a grant in.
We don't ask for.
But they can tell us.
Because if they approve the grant and we don't have the money to match the fund, they just don't give us the money. What's, what's wrong with putting the money, getting the money approved so we got something to shoot for? That gives us a reason to get out there and fund more money, do more fundraising and stuff.
I'm trying to get you off the center here because.
We need to work on it.
This community has talked about building community centers since nineteen sixty-four. I've seen the article in the paper.
Nineteen sixty-four? It's time to get on the hook.
Okay, so first of all, I don't think we have a motion on this.
Yes, you did, we did. I'll be nice like.
Yeah, we did discuss it, I'll answer that.
Bob, did you, Bob, did you make that motion? Bob, did you make that motion?
I'm not saying I don't support it. I'm not saying I don't wanna do something next year. I'm just, you know, this goes about five years, I'm not saying we're fine with it.
This is the case. It's a big project and if we don't get the money and you don't work out a deal with the casino or whatever, then it doesn't, it doesn't happen. We send a letter to the commission and say we're done.
Okay, here's my thought on this. Rusty and Lori have spent a lot of time on this, trying to move us as a community forward and I appreciate the work and the effort they've done. They have a very good packet, a presentation to the, to the nonprofit board and, you know, it's an ongoing process and I think we've discussed it, everybody brings a valid point, it's not a done deal, it is just an application for the, for this and I hope we get it so we can start and get off of the log and start moving forward and I think the community will be happy on that. So on Bob's motion and Ralph's second, I'm gonna take the roll call vote and ask Nate.
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And Ralph?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to number ten, the casino agreement. There's been a little bit of discussion on this and if we had, I'm gonna kind of back up and get a hold as I see how it processed. Here several months ago, the council approved and voted for a committee to go out and talk with the casino on, since our, our old agreement is up, on a new agreement. Bob went out, Ralph went out, I went out and Rusty went out. We had a good, probably hour-long conversation. We covered a number of things and basically the way I, I think this, what we covered in that meeting essentially is the agreement, the contract agreement that you have in front of you. I, I, obviously I don't have a vote on that, but I think that I would like to say, you know, we need to maybe use more homework on this, we need to do more research on this. I think in the end, we're gonna, we're gonna match up with the casino and we're gonna work with him as a partnership and we'll have a good agreement, but I don't know if the committee members wanna have a comment and add anything to this and/or if we need to maybe consider hating this and have a work session on it so we can have more in-depth discussion on it. But Bob or Ralph, you're part of the committee members, do you have any thoughts?
The thing that I, Bill Supple said in his opus of what's going, he says, I know, I have no idea if this is going to be a good deal for the city going forward. And I question whether we need to research a little bit and I think we need probably a session, maybe a workshop on this to lay out or another meeting with the casino to lay out some stuff because when you see the figures come in, I think maybe in the contract, I think maybe we need to go over some stuff some more and better Riverside's position because this, Bill Supple, your attorney, says he doesn't know if it's a good deal for the city or not going forward. I have questions about it too and maybe it needs to be better. And my understanding is they were pretty decided to provide us with a contract that we could research and look at and decide if that's something we wanted or not or want to change. Is that kind of the way it looked, Bob, or? Yeah, they kind of set a benchmark of where they thought their revenues would be, but most of the discussion, majority of the discussion centered around Riverside, grow, what we can do, what they can do to help Riverside move forward. We didn't spend a lot of time talking about this agreement. So we pretty much stated a few things and then they came back to this agreement. What I would like is a little bit of help of understanding the proposed agreement, the projections, these two spreadsheets that are on here as far as the total admissions. If you look at the admissions that they have of all the casinos in the state of Iowa, Riverside does have a pretty good share of that admissions. And I know they talked out there at our meeting about the head count and how their casinos set up and how that they're counting those and there could be some changes because of, if we use the head counting, I'd like Lori or Rusty to help me understand this spreadsheet with the admission fee and the hotel motel gaming.
Are you looking at the one that has all the casinos listed? What year are you looking at?
What I'm talking about is more of casino revenue, the spreadsheet that was the blue and red on it.
Oh, okay.
Explain some of those codes to us and make sure we understand what we're looking at.
That's there, in far left, gaming revenue is from two thousand and eight to two thousand and fourteen and it averages about eighty-seven million dollars a year. The new contract is kind of based on ninety, ninety million dollars a year, which they were only at once in two thousand and twelve. So the differences are the second column. The third column is plus or minus the one point three five percent, which is in the agreement for above ninety thousand or below ninety thousand. So if you took historically two thousand and eight through two thousand and fourteen and applied it to the new agreement, that's where the red box is, the average would be one point one nine six million and they're offering one point two million. So they're right in the ballpark of what they historically done. The hotel motel tax, the gaming wager, those are items that are included in the one point two. Just this contract or an agreement is no different whatsoever than the original, only it's five hundred thousand dollars less.
So that's where this spreadsheet comes in, the one that was laid out there today?
Okay, but I would like to, before we leave what Rusty just said, it isn't, it isn't any different other than the fact that in the one and three-quarter million dollars that we got, we gave up all that, we're giving it up here for one point two and we gave it up then for one, one and three-quarter million dollars. But the, but the difference is if you, in my mind, if you look at the head, head count at fifty cents a head and you look at the wagering tax of four, on an average four hundred plus thousand dollars and you look at the hotel motel, it is gonna be more than one point two million dollars.
Well, I would make a differ with you because if you press them and you go to a head count, they are gonna move, they don't have turnstiles, all right? They are not counting people. So this is a guest and that casino is laid out a lot different than, we'll say, the one in Council Bluffs. The one in Council Bluffs, you can go to the bathroom, go to the bar, eat at a restaurant, four different restaurants and never enter the gaming floor. This one's not like that. And so they're gonna put turnstiles in and these admission numbers, he'll tell you, every one of these admission numbers is the best guess on their part and they're gonna put the turnstiles in and they're gonna count in and it's gonna be anywhere near one point eight million people. It's not gonna be.
And this spreadsheet, this little section down here shows you the middle where it's blue, this shows you an average of how much, with the one point two million, how much per head count. See where it says point two seven five, point two six five? That's what it is as of right now. So you're, I mean, you're over half already.
So all these numbers on all these sheets from two thousand and eight to the current are just estimates?
Yes, sir. There, see, the admission tax was brought onto the books when Iowa only had river boats because river boats, according to OSHA, must know at all times how many persons are on board. So you had to go through a turnstile and get on rhythm city and go through a turnstile to get out of rhythm city. That way they always had a count. When these land-based casinos came on board, they're applying that turn, that count to them. It got very close to being introduced in the legislature last year, it'll get even closer this year where land-based casinos will be exempt from the head count.
Okay, I, now, I'm gonna dispute that statement also. I talked to the head administrator at the Racing and Gaming Commission today and he's unaware of anything like that coming down and I would, I would hear it from anybody. You can, you can call the racing and gaming.
Oh, yeah, he's not talking to their lobbyists because he's the enemy.
Well, but he represents, he is familiar with what is going on with the legislature and the casinos.
Well, it's just like property taxes, there were some of you who thought there would be no changes to the property taxes in Iowa and there were massive changes to the property. So, I mean, yeah, I don't have any problem. The problem I have, and I'm just gonna be right up front, when I initially talked to them, I am at one point three. We dinked and dinked around and formed a committee and got to one point two and you keep it up and we're gonna be less than American.
Rusty, when you talk about the turnstiles and they move them, in your first discussion with Dan, did he give any?
with Dan, did he give any impression on how that would change their operation? Because right now, it's, the, like I say, the buffet is more of a family type business. If they go to change on the turnstiles, would that take that away? It's now a 21 area?
And that, the people that just go to the buffet for dinner will not be counted in the head count, they can only count the people that go on to the gaming floor.
Yeah.
Right.
And the problem is, the two, the two main bars are on the gaming floor. So even if you take your family out there, and you don't spend the, you don't plan to gamble a penny, and you want to Bud Light, you're going on the gaming floor to get it. And that's, that is Riverside Casino's main contention.
So would it be, other question to, along with Ralph's comments, that we could table this, possibly have a work session between now and next meeting, because we have three weeks, I believe. We're on a deadline here, are we by, you know, thins and heels?
Well, I'm gonna, on behalf of what Rusty and I had a discussion earlier, kind of the deadline is what you, what he just had talked to you about on the grant that we applied for, on the, for the community center?
Well, even that won't push it, Bill. I mean, you've got time. I think you guys need to discuss it, and I think you need to.
Well, yeah, but, but is it halfway important to get this in by October eighth?
Well, we can get it in, like I say, this, none of this granting is carved in stone.
No, but, but your point was that there's not a lot of communities applying for good-sized grants, so the window is open for us to potentially have this approved. So, I mean, I hear that, what you just said there, and I, so I think.
So the longer you wait, we, we have no agreement right now, so the only thing we'll get this month, for the month of September, is our hotel motel and our gaming wager. That's it. They aren't gonna go retro.
And, and we do not have, I ask Chris to look at this, we do not have a ordinance or resolution stating that we are charged, you know, to have a fifty cent head tax. We don't have that in place, so that's also something that we.
On the original, on the original agreement, that wasn't, there wasn't an admission tax, but we were twelve percent.
Well, your.
It was.
Your organization.
It was.
It included.
Okay.
It was been checked.
In lieu of.
In lieu of.
In lieu of admission.
But like I was saying, could we have a work session and get this all hashed out?
Yep.
This is the time and place for, as far as I'm concerned, and this is kind of a delicate situation. We're talking some serious.
Yep.
Major serious.
Chris, Chris will make a comment, so hold on.
Okay, so we get, we get that 0.5% look, we get the hotel motel tax, no matter what, they're gonna say, "We're gonna guarantee you 1.2 million, but we're gonna take that off, 'cause we don't get it anyway, we're gonna put this up, because we don't get it anyway." So if we decide to change our line and come back with an admission tax, we're gonna change the agreement, we're gonna say, "Well, if you're gonna charge that too, then we're not gonna tee you up to 2.0."
This agreement says, "In place of head tax."
Yeah.
The agreement already says that.
It's that.
And, and Nate's point is valid, but I would say, in your point, Nate, I'm just asking the question, I'm not saying you should, should, do we need our attorney here? Do we need him here for, if you're looking at a work session?
Yeah, if I ever got a chance to finish my motion there.
Sorry, well, you didn't get to finish your motion, because Chris was trying to talk.
Of course I didn't get to finish.
So proceed, Nate?
I'd like to make the motion to have a work session to discuss roundtable style this copy here, and have our city attorney or his representative from his firm that will represent this contract to attend that meeting.
Okay.
And have this before our next meeting, hopefully, if it works out.
We can discuss that.
Say, I think we have three weeks, don't we?
We're looking for a second.
I'll second.
Okay. I'm gonna try to rephrase what Nate said, Nate's made a motion to have a work session as soon as possible before our next meeting on discussion and how we want to proceed, along with our attorney or a representative from that firm on contracts. Is that about right? And it's been seconded by Ralph. So are there any other questions, comments, or discussion?
I think we need to give Rusty and Laurie some direction on where the discussion is gonna go, rather than just walk into a meeting and then start asking the questions. I think one of the concerns that I have is, is on the admissions, how that affects this agreement if we look at wanting to go to a 50 cent a head count, and where that's gonna give us, what it's gonna gain us, what we're gonna lose if, if, if we do that. That's one of the questions that I have, and I hope, you know, you can provide some direction for them, so we don't waste time when we come to this next meeting, because if we don't make up our mind at the next meeting, we're gonna be another one.
And that, and that's basically, that's a very good point, 'cause I would, I guess my thoughts on the work session is, is, you know, what are our legal options here? You know, I mean, what, the state, the state has a mandate of what, you know, cities and counties can do, and I'm not, this is all new to me, so that's what I wanna know. I want, I, just like, he was disputing what he said, he was disputing what he said a little while ago, let's have a work session, we all figure it out on the table, all know the same information?
What, Bob, what you said is a fair, fair request and a fair point, but I guess I would think that maybe in a work session, and as soon as that, in a work session, we can give some direction to Rusty and Laurie as to what we want them to, what questions we have, that they can go back and research and look for.
I, I think they need to have that, so they have that information for the work session, not after, because now we're gonna have to have another meeting.
That's true, more than, I, I would agree with that.
Well, I would rather have all the data that's part of being, you, you got concerns, because you've expressed them to all of us, so you need to share those with Rusty and get them roughed out, so they can address those concerns. I got concerns, everybody's got concerns, we need to get that information to them, so when we come into that work session, we're working on something, not just passion over what we wanna ask.
Okay, do, do you folks here on the council think that here in the next day or two, that you can, well, where are you, buddy, any questions that you might have or concerns, or things that you'd like covered or researched? Can we, I mean, Nate, is that something that maybe you can, we can review this a little bit and have some more questions? Tom?
Yeah.
Yep, Chris, is that something we can accomplish?
Yeah, my question wouldn't have been why we didn't have the attorney sit down long before I wanted to do this, but that was my question when we first talked about it, it's like, this is putting the cards where the horse, but they all wanted to talk to you.
Ralph, would you say, would you come up with some questions or something you'd like to have a research and have for the work session? Okay, so I did talk to the attorney today, and I didn't cover this week, I covered next week. He said he's, he might be able to meet on Monday or Wednesday of next week, he wasn't, 'cause he's been on vacation, and he wasn't in the office when I talked to him. And he said that next Monday or Wednesday might work, but that there also, if anybody remembers, he had somebody in his office that was, that worked with contacts, that's what their specialty was. So as Nate, in Nate's motion, it may not necessarily be go simple. I, I did ask about, obviously, today's Monday, I didn't ask about Wednesday or Thursday this week, but there's, I suppose there's an outside, 'cause I think that we should quite, we should try to get this going as quickly as we can. I don't know about this Wednesday or Thursday, but we need a 24-hour notice to have a work session.
Next week, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Rusty and I, or council will?
You're talking about next week, okay? And, and he said that he was available on, next week, on Monday and Wednesday.
So I'll call him first thing in the morning, get to his office and see who's coming in.
And, and see if there, if any of them are, will be available for Wednesday or Thursday this week, okay? And then we can, well, a short notice for who? For them or us? I do agree with you, Ralph, it is a short notice, but it's something that, I'm kind of going back to, there's still a process that we're gonna have to do, we're gonna have to develop some kind of a counter agreement or whatever, or answer some questions, and I'm trying to meet Rusty's window on October eighth, and time flies. So maybe he could give us a couple options or times, Rusty?
Yes.
And then?
Seems I get a hold of them on communicate, so.
I'm tied up on Wednesday.
You're talking, next Wednesday?
This Wednesday.
Okay.
Next week, I'm open for part.
Okay. Maybe, maybe there would be somebody that could come down Thursday. I'm just saying, Rusty can find out what days that they would be available, Thursday, Thursday of this week, or maybe Monday of next week.
We need time to do research, too, if you have questions that he wants to research, we can't do it overnight.
I, I agree.
We'll work the best way we can, find out what's available, Rusty, if you would. Any other questions on that, so?
Would you be better?
Actually, so Nate, no, we haven't, Nate has made, I'm going back to Nate's motion of a work session, is the only thing we need to do is set the time. So all those in favor of Nate's motion on having a work session on this casino agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously, going to number 11.
Who's second, I'm sorry, who's second is that?
Was Ralph. Nate made motion, Ralph was second. On the BMW Hotel Motel grant request.
Make a motion that we approve the BMW grant request, any amount of $2,400 to replace the tile floor?
Likely, go ahead.
Okay, well, I think Nate got, got the.
Ralph had it.
What'd you say, Ralph?
Whoever.
Okay, so Chris has made a motion to approve the BMW Hotel Motel grant request, and it's been seconded by Nate. Are there any other questions or comments?
I do have one question, do they have the block wall completed off?
Yes.
It is completed, okay.
I think they still have to do some, maybe, ceiling or painting of it, maybe? That's, I'm not too sure on.
But it's tough enough that if they couldn't even floor it, it's functional, so that another one doesn't get, you know, that's fine with me. And I can't imagine that they would wanna do that, too, if it was done, but.
This was in our budget. They proposed this prior to, but we told them that we couldn't get it, told them it was out there.
That was covered in the budget for this year.
Yes, we're gonna give it to, to last one.
That's what I thought they were ready.
Okay, so on Chris's motion for the grant for the BMW, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and Mr. Chad Smothers, your view?
Just for the record, Chad, I'd like everybody to spell what names for the few favors. Chad Smothers, Riverside Fire Chief, last name S M O T H E R S, first name C H A D. Fire Department is kind of, it's been the worst for five, five to 10 years now on having our own sort of training facility, where we can conduct live burn training. Part of our yearly qualifications for our state certifications is to have hours in live burn, burn training. Currently, we have to go out of, out of the community, either Corbo or Iowa City can do this, which leaves our community uncovered for fire protection. N E M S, it would be required or requested from a mutual aid company to cover town, and we're out of, out of district for training. We've, we've budgeted over our last few years and upcoming years through our fundraisers to fund the building of a burn building. Our request to the city tonight would be approval of it, could be tonight, or you guys will have to make a resolution motion, whatever, but to use some ground out by the city maintenance building, it's kind of out back there near the timber. We're talking about a piece of ground, probably 60 by 60, this building would sit on the concrete pad. The building would be 20 by 40, with a 10 by 20 section being kind of a storage slash garage setup, and then the other part would be a 20 by 30 layout of like a residential house, which allows us to burn in two different buildings and, or two different rooms in there, along with doing search and rescue training, ventilation, post operations, fire attack, all that stuff that affects our day-to-day operations and training. This would be used also by mutual aid companies around, around the area, so Ainsworth, Colono, Longtree, those, they'd all be open, be open to anyone that we have mutual aid agreements with, which are all departments in Washington, Johnson County. Also, could be used by the Sheriff's Department, and P and G, I know they struggle at times to get buildings also, to do their SWAT stuff or whatever, so this would be something that, that they could utilize also with us in a joint thing, if they wanted to use it, they'd be willing to use it. Other towns have kind of done this, building their own, Solon and Iowa City both have done it, it's huge cost savings. We've budgeted the project to come out of our fundraising for $20,000. We work with local suppliers and members of the department, we're gonna do all the building of it. And if we would go out and buy something, say commercially, like the Corbo Fire Department did, you're talking 200 to 300,000 dollars for the building. So it's a huge cost savings by our members, obviously, our hard working dedication, want to build this for the, the department and the community, as well as the communities around us. And like I said, we've, we've worked with some, the, the building would be built out of a block and brick, and then some steel and concrete, obviously, for, for all that stuff. Right now, currently, we've got a pretty good deal on some brick for the inside burn rooms, a fire brick from Phil's Building Materials up in Iowa City, they had a long order or something, and they've worked a very good deal with agulor, with brick and block part, on the concrete stuff, the sections are handled, and then we're also working with some precast, on possibly doing the roof in a precast concrete.
Um, Chris and Chad, you guys are all covered by the workers' comp, right? And that would apply on our city property and everything as well as fire.
And we've got, I worked with Laurie and Rusty on this the last few months with contact with the cities and fires insurance company, they have zero issues with the building. They would have some sort of covers, like if a tornado knocked it down or something. We're purposely damaging the building, we're not gonna be able to turn a claim and say, "Hey, building's damaged." But low and behold, if a storm would knock it down, I hope it doesn't. So everybody's.
Yeah, they might get.
The, the insurance company has contacted, they're way bigger on board, they didn't have any issues as far as like potential.
Yeah, it would just be like a park shelter or something, or, you know, the bathroom would just be considered, so the building would be on our insurance, just as a number.
And we currently use that facility out there for training, 'cause it has a hydrant out there, gets us off the city streets when we need to use a hydrant. That's, we use it for our extracation training. We're out there three, four times a year anyways, on that property, doing training, so this would just add to it.
Any other questions for Chad?
Chad, is this similar to what you're gonna use this for? Is this similar to what that trailer is, that's portable that they're gonna run?
Uh, this would be quite a bit better. The, the problems with a lot of those trailers, like say the state has some, those are gas-fed, gas-fed fire is not realistic, we don't, don't respond to any fires that's gas-fed. Everything is a Class A material, you know, regular building stock that, that burns, so this is above the, you know, better training facility, whatever, most trailers, I mean, those trailers, most portable trailers are still on 100, 150,000 dollars or something there. Quite, quite a bit of money for, and that's just basically like a steel box, and it's nothing, so, but comparable to those, yeah.
What I, like, what I heard tonight is the cooperation between you and the other departments around to be able to use this, I think that's great.
It, it would be open, open to anyone and everyone to use it. And, and I mean, we're lucky enough that we're part of Johnson County, we can go out and use those facilities. Some of the departments in Washington County don't have that option to go out there, and it's even further than to drive clear out to Corbo, Iowa City, if they'd be a little more closer here on Riverside.
I would think you'd locate out there on 218, it's almost, almost centrally located where you can, like, even hear the, the music?
And it's, and you know, we, I, I've looked out, we've been out to the property and looked out there, you know, we'll keep it plenty far away from any structure that's currently there, you know, 100 feet away from any other building.
Have you talked to the guys?
I, not, not recently, the previous city guys I had talked to before, and they were all way on board with it.
We've talked, there's no problem.
On the main structure of this building, what would be the life expectancy of it after continuous burn practices?
Solon Fire Department has done something similar, precast concrete, they've had it for over 10 years, and are still using it day in, day out. They use it a lot with Solon, major departments in that area, along with P and G comes up and uses it for their fire debate. They've had zero issues back, they, they were the ones I went to, 'cause I had, we had concerns about concrete with the fire, the block, and it holds up very well. They, they were the ones I went to because I had, we had concerns about concrete with the fire, the block and it, it holds up very well.
With your fire brick, you can have pretty hot fire because that's even the place the fire's going to be is the same.
Yeah, and there's only two rooms in there that, that the fire, they'll technically burn it. We'll burn pallets and straw, um, to the Class A material, which will, will be for a life burn training all three years.
That can be a very good, uh, experience with breathing apparatus.
Yeah, yeah, the, the amount of training we can do in there is just unlimited.
That must mean like to be a very good thing for the department.
Is that a motion now?
I'll make a motion that they get to use the property out of the building to put their fire building up.
I'll, I'll second it.
Okay, Ralph's made a motion, uh, in support and agreement with the Riverside Fire Department to build their, uh, rent their fire structure, uh, unit out on the city property by our city, uh, building. And, uh, it's been seconded by Bob. Uh, are there any additional questions or comments?
Just one. Rusty, on the location you guys have out there, does it need any grading or clearing or where exactly?
If, if any of the work that you've done for clearing and aside or grading, I mean, it's all going to be done by us. There'd be no, no cost or there's nothing that the city would have to do as far as grading and or clearing. And our guys will handle all of that.
We'll meet out there and walk through all of that.
Do you have a general idea of where you're looking at exactly out there?
It would be, I guess if you pull it around back, I would call it off to the north is kind of the lean tube type building, the cold storage, or they call it. We would go clear to the end of that pavement that goes there and then we'd be back kind of to the, to the south and the, uh, projected, um, we're not going to get a start of this, this fall. We're going to wait until spring, until the frost, and get out of ground and then go from there.
When, when we do do this, I think we also still want to contact our insurance guy to make sure where it's placed is, is in conjunction with, uh, the N E M S. All right, so Ralph's motion, and I'll second, uh, all those in favor.
I'll...
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
Uh, just wanted to clarify this. Will this have doors in it in the bottom, Chad?
Yes, yeah, it's just one level.
Would you be able to lock the doors for us to keep?
Yeah.
Because that, that's pretty well wide open out there as far as department.
Yeah, yeah, we'll make, we'll, we'll do some like, um, there'll be metal doors, metal doors and windows and then we'll put locks and we'll, you can padlock the...
Were you thinking about using that, Nate?
Uh, there's a valid...
If there, are there, if there's no other questions, then, um, on Ralph's motion to, uh, support the Riverside Fire Department on the building, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Chad, thank you guys.
I think we'd be covered with the work.
And, uh, we can, trick or treat night, uh, October 31st, is that good with everybody?
Uh, she made all say yes.
Let's, go ahead and make the motion. Did you make a motion?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Ralph made a motion to have trick or treat day on October 31st and seconded by Chris. Any other questions or comments? No questions or comments? All those in favor of October 31st, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Uh, council request for information.
I'm just going to start adding this to the agenda to just jog your memories. If you need something specific, this would be a great time to ask and the council will discuss it and then we can proceed from there.
Okay. Unless there's some comments?
Yeah, well, I have two requests I'll turn into you, Rusty, that we discussed earlier today. Um, just know that number one, I will not be putting down any reason for why I get information. And if anyone wants to question that, you can read the article that they wrote about Larry Brock. And the judge stated in there that anybody who comes in and asks for information, it is pre-relevant why they wanted it. So we don't need to ask people that. And I think according to code, anyone who comes in here and asks for information, I don't hear one of you that should get according to the town's. So, um, you know, you passed this already. If you want to try and block people from getting the information, then go right ahead. Just note that it will probably end up to be I, B, I, V if we need that ever happens.
Any other questions?
Um, I guess I just made a comment, not really a question. I think, you know, as, as, as far as taking the job as a, being elected official, that they counsel person, I think that puts us to a little higher standard than the citizens just coming in and requesting information. We should be above board and be willing to share what it is we're looking for and why we want that information. Maybe that'll spur some other dialogue and lead us down the road for some direction of something that we need to change. So, you know, I can understand where you feel that you're above the law and everybody else and you don't want to be placed on that pedestal with Larry Brock. Uh, but, uh, to me, I, I, I feel that if we're wanting that information, we need to at least share why we want that information.
Oh, I absolutely don't want to share the pedestal with Larry Brock, but we won't be if you start asking people or demanding people to get reasons for why they like this.
I'm not really saying demanding people. I'm saying as a council person, we should be willing to share why it is we're looking for the information.
And what is it that says that anybody might want to do that?
It might, uh, spark some dialogue that we need to change something, so, some ordinance we had or whatever. But, I mean, wasn't it after the last meeting you asked to have the check stubs again? And we'd already had a meeting the last time and you were told by the lawyer that you're not entitled to it. And you still feel you're entitled to it.
I am entitled to some of the information, right?
Uh, you don't get to look at the check stubs? Not according to what the lawyer said?
He's, he's cited a court case that hasn't even gone through yet. Until that goes through, the law doesn't change.
So you want to put yourself above them?
Oh, well, please, that's not what's going on here. You look at the code, it says open information. We're trying to make this open for everybody. Anything I ask for, it's the same thing as a citizen. Any wonder you can come in here and ask for that? If Rusty wants to share anything I've asked for, that's on with me. I've always said that. There's no secrets here.
Well, I'm willing to go to the Iowa Public Information Board with this. So, uh, because I, I do not believe, uh, uh, public employees, we are not servants. You are public servants. We are public employees. And that does not give you access to our withholdings or anything else on our face up. I will, I will, I encourage you to file that tomorrow. Um, Jim DeMoore. And I want to give a perfect example. This Kirkwood came today and she wanted information about casino. We got drawers of information about it. She couldn't tell us what information she wanted about casino. I can't help you if you don't tell me. Lori can't help you if you can't be more, more specific. And that, that's just a prime example. If a citizen came in here today, I would have told them the same thing we were told.
Exactly. Rusty, I came in here first and asked for a copy of the agreement and you gave me one compliance. It wasn't even Riverside agreement.
We got what?
Lori gave me an, an annexation agreement and I had what I wanted. I said, I'll look at this first and then decide. Because yes, there's a whole drawer back there. How am I supposed to know what's in that drawer? And I don't have time to...
Well, you should know what you're wanting to find out. And that's why we ask you, what do you want? What's the purpose? And we defined it. You tell us. Maybe there's a shortcut to finding it.
Well, it's a process of negotiation that you just have to work that. I, I don't know what else you can do. You ask and I'll try and give you the best answer. I looked at that annexation...
No, you have not. You put your hands on your hips and said, you're not telling us because we don't need to know.
I looked at the annexation agreement and I showed her, this got the answer to my question. I said, I'll look at this and if this is okay, then I'll go with it.
But it's not the first time, Chris.
And it won't be the last.
Okay. So, uh, let's try not to have any further discussion on this one.
Well, no, I haven't got to say my two cents.
Okay, all right. Yeah, Nate.
See, this, this is the resolution that we're referring to that I've emailed Rusty at least twice. And you, if you remember, a couple of months ago when Rusty wasn't here, you asked Lori to get me the copy of the email that I asked for. This is a resolution that Victor Snyder voted on pending approval. The lawyer charges to do his homework on that, but we've never seen the approval from the lawyer. We got one from the League of Cities or the League of somebody or other, but that's not, that's not, that's not...
Didn't we ask anybody?
When, when the lawyer, the city attorney was here, you directed that to him the same way. So that's four times right there that that's been asked for, twice by me, twice by you.
I'm going to make this a...
And I saw it happen.
Can we ask, uh, Bill Subal on that, I think the last time? And I know he's got a lot going on.
So what specifically are you asking for?
What did he say about the resolution? That was, that was...
His ruling.
That was passed pending lawyer approval, city attorney approval. If that resolution was even legal to vote on, well, it's illegal.
It's an administrative policy and we can make any kind of administrative policy.
But we, we wanted, we wanted him to weigh in on it. So if you need to ask, because we, we talk...
If you guys, if it's an administrative, if it's an administrative policy that the majority of the council votes on, it can be approved.
Trying to make firearms legal in this building.
Is that an administrative policy?
What?
Is that an administrative policy?
If we voted on it.
Right.
Which you can't, you can't override a state decision.
No, you can't.
Let's prove that up time already.
They do it everywhere.
They would stick down to the order if it's legal. You can't do that.
Well, so, so just...
I, we wrote on something.
We need to, you asked...
And we know time, time again, we vote on stuff and we still get it.
You asked the attorney's, uh, comment on it and ruling.
I, and I think that's valid. And I sent my email to everybody up here when I asked for that a little time so we could have dialogue.
So Lori or Rusty, if we could get Bill to weigh in on that, that'd be appreciated.
We have Margaret Johnson's response too.
Okay.
I'd like to get a copy. I met with, uh, N E M S today, um, for the first time, just to kind of lay off the ground with the rules and start a discussion and then tour, tour the rail. So they're bringing together a plan that they're bringing to the council and, uh, standing their faith in it. To, uh, get, uh, get a capital improvement claim up and running. Those who advised, uh, advised me to notify Rollins just in case, uh, we would begin some activities up on that property. We deal with point 09, parcel M. You have to give them notice by September 1st, uh, that they are done in March. And I asked, I sent a letter that if our development plan don't fall through, we would be able to, to talk to him about farming.
Okay.
Uh, Lori, in the same spot we were in last year with Lori's hours of vacation and personal time, I, I think in mine, I've been able to. She's 86.14 hours over than what she can carry over October 1st and two personal days. She's been trying to take some time off. It's been pretty hard with too hotness going on this year. So I'm asking that you take her perfect vacation or change the... Are you going to, can we do that tonight or do we need to put it on agenda? Well, it's under discussion action under some administrative... Doesn't take a resolution.
Okay, I would agree with that, what Rusty just said, said on the city management comments on the, on the agenda, turns on the notes. But N E M S is making a motion.
Any hour, seven, eight, second, one, one more, two personal days. I'll make a motion for Lori and Chris paying the hours. 86.14, um, for Lori's vacation time.
What about the two personal days?
And those as well.
Sorry. Okay, Bob's made a motion to, uh, on the notation of Rusty making us aware on the discussion action. Uh, has made a motion on paying Lori her hours, uh, and personal days and has been also seconded by Tom. Are there any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I'd like to know how she acquired many hours. We had the same discussion a year ago and we all decided that, or I thought we all said that was wrong then. Now we're going to do the same thing a year later.
As far as re, reboots there, Nate?
How many years she worked here, she has 166 hours of vacation, you know, in a year. Can you tell me any other employee that has that in a year? I know you got 160.
Lori?
You got 160.
And Lori, can, can you explain that to us?
I have 166.
I have three weeks a year and I have to carry over two, so that's five weeks a year. You didn't hire another help, you received...
Yeah.
I agree with you.
We didn't grow that though.
You don't have to go on if it's, if it's in her contract.
We didn't grow that though.
Well, that's how we hired her though.
No, we didn't.
Well, you man, you can't, I don't see how you can change that, uh, unless you want to put it on a motion.
What, we just called a little while ago and this...
No, Rusty, and I'm just about ready to say, you, you won't be able to change it tonight if you want, moving forward, if you want to change that, we can change that.
You can change this.
We can change it. Any vacation, anything on, or any employee that was taken as a, you have to pull council approval.
Oh, boy, the handbook, just one of the...
Yeah, I was going to say the handbook, we can change that too because now we're just, we're just ignoring what the handbook says. So what are you going to go by here? We have these books we don't follow, we have the rules we don't follow, we have the guidelines we don't follow. The handbook says you can only carry over so much. But she's got twice as much as any other employee that has worked here for twice as long. And...
I'm not sure the numbers you're drawing out is accurate, but I...
He just said that, Rusty just read that, it's in here. Can't carry over more than eight hours a year.
We discussed this last year, she was hired in a vacation.
So if this looks like a management issue to me, Rusty, it's your responsibility to make sure that employees have their time to take off on vacation.
That's what it is.
You know, we, like, makes us, we discussed this last year, what part of that did people not engineer?
How often do you go through a free audit in two years?
That, that's, that's what, this is all about.
I mean, this is a unique circumstance. This isn't normal. The way this has been going on for the last two years has not been normal. None of this stuff has been normal.
And we hired another extra person for the office and we had a line on consulting. We've hired extra people, no other difference.
And it's not any more than we had in previous...
And we're still not clear on the audit yet. We still have issues that they got to get corrected. So in October, hopefully, they can come in and finalize this one. And then we'll know where we're at. I mean, this has just been one constant, trying to figure out, are this is all I? So she's had a lot of extra hours that she's had to put in this year, so that doesn't give her any time to take vacations.
I think a day or two a year or half a day here, but it's a small office and there's only two of us.
And, you know, so this, this leads into the management thing. It's like, that is an issue. Why did we do things and learn a lot of powers there on something that is not a priority? Isn't a nice attitude? Indeed it is, but it's a management responsibility to balance those things.
Okay. So on Lori's earned hours, Bob's motion and Tom's second, uh, all those in favor of paying Lori her hours and her personal days, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion carries three to two. Uh, moving on to, uh, did you have any other comments there, Rusty?
No.
Okay. I'm going to start with council comments and Nate.
No, keep yours up.
Okay. Bob? Tom? Chris?
Um, thank you very much for the, uh, drawing the blueprint on the concession stand. What is that going on to do?
Since it's engineered...
This isn't a big one to go on, my dear. This isn't, this isn't to go on manually.
There's no specs. There's no process.
There's no electrical HBC or plumbing or anything.
So how long is that going to take this?
Well, Lynn thought it'd then get turned around really quick, so.
What's Lynn?
Well, we don't know. We'll find out. It's, it's going to go out. But you can't send that out to a local contractor.
Okay, just, just to, just to make a point here. If we can even get the, the concession stand blueprints up and going, as we talked about at the last budget, they should have been out prepared since July. How are we going to do a?
Day by day.
Keep things moving.
Day by day.
I'm just tired of it and I'm tired.
So, is there anything else?
That's it.
Okay, Ralph?
No.
Okay, the only thing I would say is Rusty, if we can work with our attorney up and try and establish a, a time for a work session, try and establish so everybody could be here hopefully as soon as possible. That would be appreciated if you listen to Ruth. Thanks everybody tonight.
Scott's going up at Ella and it takes a month to get him, by the way. So I ordered it today afternoon and it came Friday. So beautiful work this year.
Meeting adjourned.
The previous one.
Good.
If the question is after the table, they don't want to get checked.
No, maybe not. I've written in Lewis.
And here.
This, and the, and the, especially when you saw it, it's showing.
And they don't want to make sweet, sweet.
No.
So, but.
Well, we faced that one thing after our first year.
But the question is, is it, they want to do that in the context that you, you know, this is, this is what we're proposing to give this. We're just trying to.
That's what we need to do. I want you to be chair of the director's office. But Rusty, we're very frustrated with what you do when the patient is going to change.
Yeah, I would try to do that for Tom.
And it says vote, you know, and that's how to vote. So basically what you're saying is you don't want to vote. Because if they take that, and they're going to take that away, they'll never forget that money. You know, here, just for getting half, and in the long run will be terrific, you know? Half is better than nothing. So that's good for trips. And they don't. Another thing that non-fired people.
Excuse me, Kelly.
I think it works out better if I go down.
Chris, do you have a copy of that?
I have to wait for Kevin. I went out to the bathroom and I came back and Nate was going on about the carryover of the whatever. Paula's sitting right there and she goes, it didn't carry over, you idiot.
It did.
But no, and I turned, I heard that. I was like, okay, wait a second. I said, I looked at her and said, be nice. Don't call him an idiot. Shoot, it's, that's out of, that's out of line.
Yeah, it is out of line. And it's also not true. Just so you know. Yeah, I left a copy of it with Rusty so he can put it with him minutes. And if it disappears, I got another one at home. Do you want to go up to Nate Robinson's?
Yes, but I have to wait for Kevin.
Oh, okay. All right.
She thought we were going to take longer and he went to get supplies.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Thanks. Thanks for walking out with.
Hey, no problem.
So this was not there.
I, I told Carrie I had to be your bodyguard.
I cannot believe that Tom went along with that. I just.
No, I'm good.
I just wanted to know. He's waiting together.
Wait.
Homeless guy. Thought maybe he needed.
It's not the first time I've gotten that. Okay. All right.
They're going to be, he's going to go down and load up too. I, I just, I can't even believe that Tom on that stuff. That is clearly illegal to give them.
Yeah. Well, Nate did too.
If they go out there and they win any money, yeah.
Nate, Nate, Nate did too. I, you know what? That would give me any, I would say, you know what? Let's just check. Let's just check.
Let's just check. Because there's no public tickets for them.
Because Bob just says, no, I'm not going to amend it. No, of course not. Oh, there's my ride. I'm coming.